For. I'll do that again. Thank you. All right. So it is now six oh seven P M. We'll begin our town of Windermere. Uh workshop for July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Um this uh evening's meeting is going to cover uh Lake Street Park Access System and Fencing, as well as a temporary restroom facilities or discussion of the temporary restroom facilities at Town Square Park. Um and obviously some back and forth uh with uh Q and A, public comment and council discussion. With that, I will turn our uh presentation over to Tanya.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And I am not as good at Robert as doing both things, speaking and presenting. So as the mayor said, we're going to discuss this evening, the late Lake Street Park Fencing and Access System. We're providing an update to Town Council because we did have a public workshop on this issue. So I'm just going to provide a brief background on how we kind of got here. At your Town Council Workshop on July twelfth, you had asked town staff to explore the option of adding the fencing in the access system at Lake Street Park, which is at Fifth and Lake Street, and then Lake Down Park, which is at Fourth and Magnolia. This required us to take a look at what the high watermark would be and what type of authorization we might need from Orange County E P D, depending on where that fence would sit and a high watermark. So after going through that process, what we did finally determine was that as long as the fencing stayed above the high watermark, no permit from Orange County E P D would be required. So we were fortunate to be able to come up with a plan that's going to do exactly that, and we won't then have to proceed forward with any of the of permitting through them. This is going to be the same fencing and access system that we have at Fernwood Boat Ramp, which is operating very well at present. So like I said, we did come back to the public after we found out about the high watermark. That public M workshop was very positive. There was no negative um comments about proceeding forward with the fencing and access system. In fact, basically what they said was, could you please ask Town Council for approval to move this forward? So in order to do that, what we're doing is coming back to a workshop to provide Town Council with the same information we provided at the public workshop. So you can then provide us with a path forward. So what I'm going to talk about now is a fencing proposal layout. As we've gone through this process, it's it's come up a lot of times. Can you show us exactly where the fencing would be? How how long it would be, where it would go to? So as you can see in this diagram, what we did is outlined and read where that fencing would go that keeps it out from that high watermark and keeps us from having to proceed forward with the permit from Orange County E P D. And I can say that that is what we want to do. If if staff were making the recommendation, we definitely want to not have to go through that permitting process for this fence and access system. So there is the map showing that it's going to that seawall and then over to the bushes. And I have a better view of that for you all next. So where will it go to? Um there is, this hedge is a residential hedge, and this is residential light fencing. So we would be taking that that aluminum fencing all the way up to that hedge um there. So it was in question as to how far we would go. That's how far we would be able to go. We would have a pedestrian access, obviously, at the dock because people still need to be able to get on the dock and 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 all of that and enjoy that. Also, you need to provide access to that beach area. So there would be a pedestrian that would go somewhere here in a similar area that it is now. Um it also gives us an opportunity.
Tanya, I'm I'm so sorry. Can everyone please mute their phones? Someone.
Your phone.
Someone. We're picking up a lot of.
We're picking up a lot.
Thank you. All right, back to you.
Yep, absolutely. So we would also need to provide provide pedestrian access here at the Beach Access. This has been an area where some residents have have complained about the um access getting over there. It tends to have a dip because of the the ground and and the grass there. So we would be able to go ahead and fix that area as well when we put that access gate in. So I just want, that's just an aside, but I wanted to make sure I noted that. And then the fencing would also go up to this seawall, which is the residential seawall here to block off this area. So actually, if you're looking at this area, we have blocked this off with fencing even better than we were able to do at Fernwood. And Fernwood's been operating very well. So when you get down to Lake Down Park, and I like to make sure everyone understands where that is because it can be confusing sometimes. So this is Fourth and Magnolia. This is where Lake Down Park is. And as you can see, you have residents here on either side of this entryway that leads into this park. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware that there are residents who actually have driveway accesses off of this area here, which is town property, but still they access their driveways and garages from our area there at Lake Down. So what we are proposing for Lake Down is to just keep, this is the current um split rail fencing and opening that is at Lake Down Park. And so what we're proposing is just to put the fencing, um the aluminum fencing in the same area and just create a pedestrian access through here. There has been talk from from some of the Parks and Rec Committee about looking at options to allow parking back in this area. I think one recommendation that staff could make is to go ahead and put this fencing in this access pedestrian access gate in and then see if that calms things down enough for those residents that live near here to even start to consider that option for golf cart parking potentially, et cetera. So just wanted to throw that out there because that has come up in these discussions, and I wanted to make Town Council aware of that. So as we move forward, everybody always asks, what's it going to look like? So these are actually photographs of the fencing system at Fernwood and the pedestrian gate access. So we would have similar fencing like this, six feet aluminum powder coated, six foot pedestrian gate with the four posts, as they call it. So it would look like that. Now, what's this going to cost us? So what I did is we've been going back and forth with this process for quite some time. And so I went back in July to the to the contractor and asked them to update any price increases that may have occurred since we talked about this previously. So in order to do both these locations and these parks that we talked about, it would be forty one thousand six hundred and thirty five dollars. So what is that getting us? What it's getting us is a fencing and an access system here at Fourth and Magnolia, and it's also getting us fencing and two access points here at the Lake Street Park at Fifth and Lake. So with that, that ends my presentation on the Lake Street Park Fencing and Access System, and I would open it up to Town Council for any questions you may have or comments.
Thank you, Tanya. Um council, if you have questions or comments, um if you would please be so kind as to uh use your little hand and raise the uh icon, that'll help us a lot. Uh just allows me to get to to all the folks as we go. I have a couple of quick questions. So if's. Um so o- overall, this is exactly what we uh discussed, what we liked, what we um similar i- in many ways to what we were able to do uh with the uh boat ramp at Fernwood. Um I think my my biggest question for this particular, at Lake Street Park for this particular fencing, is when we tie into the hedge. You know, I don't want to just push the problem up the street. Is there is there a delineation there that I'm not uh maybe aware of that will, you know, kind of stop folks from uh entering that private property there? You know, I don't want to just, you know, I don't want to be careful with pushing it over. I think that was my concern there.
Well, I will tell you, um and as I mentioned in my presentation, this is actually locked up, as I would say, much better than even Fernwood is. We're not having that issue at Fernwood. So that that hedge comes all the way up. It's pretty high. Um and then that that resident has has that fencing. So for somebody to want to trespass on to that private property, they would probably think twice about doing that. And I had the same comments at at Fernwood. What's going to happen? Is it closed tight enough? Aren't they going to just walk up over here and go through this brush? They're not. Um because when you, when you sanction off public property so that you have to now force somebody to go on private property, they're more reluctant to do that because they know they can be trust trespass, police can be called. Now they're doing something that they really shouldn't do because it's not public property. So it really stops a lot of that. And and we've been um successful at doing it at Fernwood, and there's far better, bigger gaps, as you would say, at Fernwood like that than there are here in this situation.
And I agree. It's it's been very successful at Fernwood, and I've I've heard nothing but positive feedback from all the residents that live down there. I've I've heard nothing negative about it at all. So um that's a win. Uh I think this will be as well. I'm going to start working my way down. Uh those individuals who uh raise their hands, we'll start with Councilperson Haynes.
Uh yeah, I just wanted to have repeat what you said about the Fourth Street side of it because, sorry, my daughter came in the room and I didn't catch it.
Sure. Hold on. Let me go back up and we'll have a look. So at Fourth Street, here's your situation, Brandy, at Fourth Street. As you know, there's already split rail fencing there s- and and a gap for access out to that dock that the the town owns in this this green space. So what we would be proposing is to put that aluminum fencing where you see the um where you see the uh split rail. I'm sorry, I'm admitting somebody. And then you would get a pedestrian access gate right there, basically where there's already an opening now. So not much here would change, except now you have an access system. You have to have a code. There's a six foot fence there to try to get into that area.
Okay.
And again, it's also buttoned up much better than Fernwood.
And these would just have the pedestrian key code thing like the ones at Fernwood?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's my.
So in other words, there's no vehicle. There's no vehi- vehicle gate here. It's just a pedestrian gate.
Okay, would the passcode match Fernwoods or would each park end up having their own passcode?
Um it depends on what that resident wants to do. So it'd be the the resident's choice on that.
Oh.
Just like it is now. If they wanted to keep the same one, they could, and it's all tied to the same, the same um address then. So if there's anything, if if that code's being used inappropriately, it shows up connected to the address that it's assigned to.
Okay, I don't have one yet, so I wasn't sure.
And then it also tells us, it also tells us which park and which gate it was that was accessed with that code.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome. And it makes it actually better for residents not to have to memorize so many codes that they've already created in their.
That would be exactly my reason for asking.
Exactly.
So um one of the other things I just, I I I did want to comment on briefly. I know there uh are some folks who would like to have some golf cart parking at the other uh gate at the, it's the Fourth Avenue part. I know we discussed it. I know that our strategy there is to uh make sure that we we do what we need to do to solve this issue. And then uh you know, kind of in the in the practice of you can always get less strict, but it's difficult to get more strict. So we're going to kind of close it off, send the message, then we will kind of address this as we go. Um and if we're able to make adjustments or tweaks to do that, it's not that we don't want to. Uh I think it's just we want to make sure that we maximize the effectiveness of this solution for those individuals and residents that have really had an undue burden placed upon them uh down there in in that area. Uh with that, I will go to um Mindy, uh you had your hand up.
I did, but my answers, my questions got answered before I could ask them. I do have one comment, though. It would be nice to have, I I love the golf cart parking idea when things calm down. I think it would be nice to have a loading and unloading zone there as well for people with kayaks and canoes and stuff like that. But other than that, that was my my uh questions got answered before I could, before you got to me. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, with the loading zone and the unloading zone, I think it kind of falls into that same um you know, modality of of let's let's control this situation and then um you know, give it six months reassess and see what we can do about about making it more resident friendly. Um we certainly, we we want that. I just want to make sure that we get the effectiveness of this investment.
Do we have cameras at this location?
We do, yes.
At Fourth Street, like right here?
Yeah. Oh, yes, ma'am. We have them at Fourth, which is Lake Down Park, and we also have them at Lake Street Park and Fernwood.
Okay, yeah, I agree because it'd be nice to, I I mean, I went there, we didn't have a golf cart until recently ourselves, and we went there with my daughter. And honestly, I didn't even know it was there. But anyways, when we found it, we're like, oh, this would be a nice place for a picnic, but then realized there's nowhere you could, you know, like park a golf cart and doing that on a bicycle is a bit difficult. So I'm sure you saw my golf cart there, just saying.
I didn't see anything, Brandy.
Yeah, I was never there. I, you know, that's not my golf cart.
All right. Any additional uh comments from council on this item?
I'm good.
Any um any comments from uh any residents or the public joining us for this particular meeting? Uh if you'll go ahead and just raise your hand, let us know. We'll make sure that we um get your input as well. All right, seen none. Um council, is this uh in a place that we are uh willing to have it added to the next agenda? For approval?
I'm good with that.
I'm good.
Yep.
All right, staff, I think you have the direction that you need then, unless you tell me differently.
No, sir. That's what we needed. Much appreciated.
Sorry. Hello, can you hear me?
Who is that?
Yes.
Yes, Robert. Hey, how you doing? Um I'm not sure if Tanya went over this, but we still need to make sure that there's general public that is has access to this. We have to come up with a piece of that for um residents on.
So is our plan to develop a a methodology for that as we move forward?
Yeah, we're going to look at other jurisdictions. Yeah, sorry about that.
Do we have to get that at Fernwood?
No.
No, Fernwood is a boat ramp, but this is a park. We utilize for that funds for that uh for those improvements. So we need to make sure that it is open to the public, the general public. But we're working on, you know, is there a percentage of people that we need to include as far as a certain number? And then what that cost would be to those people that want that um it access.
Yeah. So we can work on that and put together something to present. Um I don't think that it stops our our process here in any way unless unless uh someone from legal or Robert, you tell me differently.
No, it doesn't stop your process here, and we have a, we have a draft of of how we might proceed with that. So um that that's that we'll we'll work that out before this is installed.
Sounds good. Yeah, I think uh the thing that I want to make sure, you know, based on a lot of resident input is that um we're moving forward uh in terms of of getting this approved, which I believe we are. And once we approve it, what's our projected uh install and turnaround time?
Well, I'm looking at six to eight weeks, depending on how long it takes. So you have an access system coming from a separate vendor, and then your fencing comes from a separate vendor. So we're looking at six to eight weeks probably for at least getting the materials in and then scheduling the install.
Okay, so since we didn't have a council meeting last month, I'd um council, I think we'd like to have this on the next agenda. Fair enough?
I'm good with that.
All right, let's let's do it. Thank you, staff, for this presentation. We'll move to restrooms.
Yes, sir. So at a previous Town Council meeting, we had come forward and brought some costs to staff relative to a restroom trailer for the Town Square Park. The reason for that is the Town uh Manager's Office had been receiving quite a few requests from residents asking that some kind of restroom facility be put out there because they had lost the community restroom restrooms when that was demolished. So what we did at that time is we came back with a price for a a trailer. At that time, Councilwoman um Haynes asked us to take a look at a prefab restroom facility similar to what they have at Bill Frederick Park. Um that's a City of Orlando park. So I reached out to the City of Orlando, found out that they had used Leesburg concrete. They had piggybacked a Lake County contract from Leesburg concrete for the prefab structure that they had there. So I reached out to them, and we were able to get costs from them on a prefab restroom facility. So the costs here are what we would have as far as the piggybacking goes. However, what I do want to bring up is that this cost that you see on your screen includes the price of engineering fabrication of the structure, plumbing fixtures, electric, bathroom accessories, delivery, site crew, crane and operator. However, all site work, stub ups and foundations would have to be done by the town through our own individual contractor. So we could be looking at thirty to fifty thousand more um just to get the site ready for all of that. So that is your prefab restroom and and costs. And what I'm going to do is move through all three, and then what I'd like to do is open it up to Town Council for your feedback and input. We would still obviously add it to the janitorial contract because folks don't like dirty restrooms. So we would need to be sure that those have been at least looked at, cleaned up. Here was the restroom trailer cost. Again, this is forty two thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars for this. This was for twelve months of that sitting on the site. If we went up to twenty four months, we would get a fifteen percent discount. And that's with one cleaning per week and pump out from that service. We could also add this to janitorial service. So when they come in, they take a look and clean it up, just like they do at the restrooms over at Windermere Recreation Center currently. And then the final third option that we were asked to look at would be deluxe portlets. I went with deluxe portlets. I didn't think anybody wanted the real basic ones. So the three would be ten thousand six hundred and twenty dollars as an annual cost. If we went to just two of them, it's seven thousand eighty dollars. And I would again want to ask the janitorial crew to check those when they're here. So that are the, that's the three options that we have. And what I'd like to do is open it up to Town Council for discussion on where you think you might like to go with this.
Right. Um thanks, Tanya. A quick question. Um this is, it's an unfair question, so I'll preface it with that. I- if we were to move forward at the maximum pace with our um bathroom addition to the current town hall, what what timeline would we be estimated to be looking at?
I think John was saying anywhere between eight months to twelve months, but John, I'll let you hop in on that.
Yeah, thank you, Tony. Yeah, thank you, Tony, for the crystal ball.
Right, sorry, sorry. Maybe maybe a magic eight ball.
Uh yeah, I think magic eight ball would be better, and let me shake it real quick. Uh ask another question is what it said. Fair. I I, you know, I think from a standpoint of permitting and construction, um you know, we're probably talking about five to six months. So add on approvals, final design drawings, everything else, another three months. So you could be anywhere from, you know, eight, nine to ten months.
See, I was good, real good.
Yeah, that's actually, that's a good eight ball. So uh so just for reference and conservative estimate, we we could use a twelve month timeframe.
I think that's a fair assessment, Jim.
Okay, you know, just based on real world. Um and you know, things that that get in the way. So um all right. So I I just want to have that out there for council to use as a as a benchmark as we talk about these options. Um with that, I will um move to Councilperson David.
Yeah, one of the options, Tanya, I think we were looking at uh getting was you've got the rental prices for that portable. Did we investigate how much a purchase is?
Mr. David, I did not, but I will I will get that cost.
Yeah, because I think one of the concerns was, you know, forty six thousand dollars is, you know, money just thrown down the the.
I I knew where you were going.
I probably would have said toilet, but.
I'm not that funny. Anyway, so you know, I my thought is, you know, if we purchase it, we can use it at, you know, events around town, um not just here at uh Town Square Park. So it may maybe worth looking into.
Yes, that's my apologies. I think I misunderstood you to last meeting. I thought you meant for this this prefab, my.
No, that that too.
That's true. There are also, there is a a couple websites out there that um deal in in used restroom trailers, probably because people do something similar to what we're doing. Now, there is, there is a bit of an attractive element to, if we were to purchase one um and then have that, we could use it as needed um for for different events and things like that. It so it, you know, it it it's it's not super simple to store, but at the same time, there there could be some benefits. Although I don't know, it it you would then have to look at one, you know, again, uh I don't want to engineer this sucker, but you know, some have holding tanks, some don't, some uh some need to be hooked up to uh existing sewer or septic. So we have to make sure we we factor that into. But good, good question, Tony. I I think that there there are some options there uh potentially to look at as well. All right, um Brandy.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I mean, and that that was my whole thought when we talked about this a couple of months ago. If you were to rent one for two years, you're you're pushing close to a hundred thousand. A prefab bathroom is a hundred, a little over a hundred thousand, not including the extra site work that you said. Um this is actually one of the ones that I had sent to Robert as well, too, because they put one like this um at John's Lake Boat Ramp um and where I used to live over in Winter Garden, which is technically Lake County, though, where it's at. Um but there are a lot of other companies that I found online, too, that have things that aren't quite so um aesthetically unpleasing. It'd be nice to the company that makes it because I found, you know, ones that could be made of wood, ones that look like, uh, you know, they belong out west in like, you know, the Alamo or, you know, there's all different varieties and styles that it could be that it wouldn't necessarily have to be something that looks like that. Um and and that's the Leesburg one. But I mean, I I looked at a lot of websites that had prices and up the East Coast that delivered even to Florida, and they were all pretty much around these kind of prices. So there are other aesthetic looking ones. Um and you know, if we were considering an idea that wasn't right next to Town Hall, then something like this could end up being permanent, too, if it's a nice design and looks better, because I wouldn't want that permanently. Um but that would be technically a lot cheaper than the three hundred thousand dollar price tag we have on the square at Town Hall. So just as best my comments.
I I will tell you from my perspective, based upon the large investment that we're going to have to make into restrooms that and and the relatively, yeah, a year's not short, but it's also not long. I would like to go eat just the least expensive way possible to meet the need, um take the burden off the businesses and use whatever funds we would have spent on a a more robust solution uh on on the permanent restroom facilities in the town hall. That's that's my two cents.
Right. I mean, my thought was that we designed, that's why I said, you know, even if you do something stick build, I don't know that it would be more or less expensive than prefab. Um but that's why I said, you know, I'd wanted to see if Stephen Withers or someone could kind of give us a drawing of something that would match like a miniature version of like the library or something. Because like, there's one, I put it, pasted a link in the uh um chat, which is, and mind you, this is the one that's a little bit more old west, but this is more of a wood style one. And that company is called Conestoga Wagon Company, and they do shower houses and bathrooms. But there's ones that that could match more of the, you know, Florida vernacular, as I always hear Teresa Schrutsman Myers say, of either our town hall or like that building. And I I think overall, it would be less expensive than the one that we're currently have planned for Town Hall. So.
No. Councilperson Williams.
Well, I'm in agreement with your kind of thoughts. I'm looking at it as we go the cheapest route and let's pour the money and the time into the ones for Town Hall. Because that's where that's the biggest need is is going to be there long term.
And and that's where the return is, right?
Exactly. And we had so many, when we removed the last set of bathrooms, we had plenty of residents come out and say, we don't want bathrooms at all for the tennis courts or for the basketball courts, which isn't really great, and it's not really fair to the businesses. So I think definitely we need something temporary. Uh but I don't think, you know, if we're looking at a third of what the bathrooms for Town Hall is going to cost, then you know, prefab is definitely out the window, in in my opinion. I think, you know, you're going from three hundred fifty to four hundred fifty, almost five hundred at that at this point. And nobody wants a bathroom. Everybody likes the green space. We were told over and over again that where the old bathrooms were, were a terrible location. They loved the green space that it opened up when we took the building down. So I I I really want to stay on that that direction.
Agreed. And and you know, the other thing we talked about was when that, when that proposal was um, you know, turned down, we, you know, we spoke about these challenges that would occur. You know, there there are real challenges. So um you know, decisions have um, you know, impacts. So all right, uh Councilperson David. And then we'll go to Councilperson David.
Yeah, I just want to pile on with what you and Andy were saying, Mayor. Um you know, let's do the cheapest route so we can get the uh eventual uh construction in place.
Thank you, sir. Uh Councilperson Dave.
Thank you. I'm in agreeance. I I'm I'm I don't use part of. Thank you. I'm in agreeance. I, I'm, I'm, I don't use porta potties. I refuse to use porta potties. I'm even wondering, do we even need to invest in that and maybe. Allow town hall bathrooms for big events to be used in the, in the, in, in focus on getting the permanent bathrooms built. But. I, the cheapest route, if we can, um, I just, I won't use porta potties. I just, I will drive all the way home before I have to use one. Um, it's, it's, it's a bad stigma for me, but, um, I, I don't know. I just, I don't, I don't see the point in putting money and more time into talking about. Something that is not permanent. And I think it's, I, I think it's a waste of town resources. I think we should be pouring them into the permanent ones. And town halls. So that's my two cents.
So, but would you use a deluxe portlet? It's the question.
Nope. I will drive home.
Thanks. Uh, councilperson Haynes, is your hand still up or is that?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add something. I just, I, I know Andy, I don't think Andy was on the other night. I just wanted to make sure that it's clear. That I'm not saying put it in the old community location. I'm not saying put it where the pavilion was locating in no way, shape or form. And when I say this option, I don't mean as a temporary and then we turn around and we pay for a permanent. I mean, if this. Could be designed to be both. A quicker solution at potentially that would be a perk. But something that could look good and be the long-term choice, not to pay for two separate things. I just want to be clear that that's not what I'm saying at all.
Okay, yeah. No, I think.
I don't use portlets either, but the, the little trailers, you know, if they've got the bathroom and they're running water in them, I have used those. And I'm not opposed to the idea of buying one of those used or otherwise as a temporary use. Cause you could just resell it and it'd be easier to resell than a big concrete prefab or some other thing. But. But I only mean the prefab style if it's designed to look like our town hall. And if that then became the permanent thing, not, not a prefab and then buy something else later.
Yeah, okay. Um, I, I just, for clarity's sake though. I, I want everyone to understand that if you're talking about a trailer. If you're talking about a prefab prior to construction of. And I, I understand what you're saying, Brandy, but if you're talking about a, any temporary solution, that temporary solution is going to have to be. If not exactly where the existing or the, the, the previous bathrooms were. Um, they'll be very close because that is where the septic is. So, you know, I'm just talking reality here. So you're going to put. If you go with any of these solutions, you're going to put something in that green space that we just. Battled over, uh, you know, quite a bit.
I think it could be at the back of the library. Like I'm even looking at street view right now and between the extension that they just added to the library. And the bushes where the dumpster is, um, cause I'm looking from Forest Street side, you know, on street view. And right now it's under construction on the street view mode, but like where the building ends. There's not a lot of large trees right there. We have, uh, crepe myrtle, it looks like, and some shrubs. That it could be located on that side closer to where the. The temporary town offices were, but slightly south of that location. It, I don't think there's anything major there. I mean, I'm not in person, unfortunately, but that's what I'm seeing on street view.
Right. But you'll need to be quite close to the. You'll need to be quite close to the existing, uh, septic hookup. Um, so that, I don't know if that's going to allow you to put it over where you were looking at on street view, but, um, obviously we'll have. If we go this direction, we'll have, we'll have the folks with the technical knowledge, uh, look at that.
Right. There is a septic over that way though, too. The original community bathroom ones were actually pretty far away from the community bathroom. Just as an FYI.
Okay. Councilperson Williams?
Yeah, I was gonna just say, good luck with that. If you put it all the way back there next to the library. Uh, go knock on the people's doors that live on Forest right there. Five two six Forest, uh. They, they were adamant about buffers when we had the temporary offices there. Um, you know, it's a bad location. It needs to be close to town hall because. If we rent out town hall, once it's done and it's upgraded and it looks great and. Nobody's wanting, is gonna want to leave town hall, walk out in the rain to go find a bathroom somewhere.
I agree.
So we need to focus on town hall.
Okay. Uh, I, I, yeah, I think that, uh, so, you know, consensus wise, so we can get clear direction to staff. I believe, um, what I'm hearing is that, or when we don't want to spend, uh, a significant portion of what the. Existing or what the eventual permanent solution will be at town hall. I, I would, I think we would, uh, as a council, would rather take those funds, invest those into town hall. Um, whether it's in the kitchen or whether it's upgrading the bathrooms or making sure we have exactly what we want there. Which is something that will pay dividends for fifty years over a eight to twelve month solution here. Um, and that, uh, I'm, I'm thinking that we should go with, um, a temporary. Uh, inexpensive solution like the deluxe portlets. And, you know, if we have events, um, we can rent these nicer facilities, the, the trailers for short periods of time.
What do you mean by deluxe portlet? Is that what we have now at town hall for those?
It's the green one.
Okay. What makes it deluxe? I don't know. I don't go in them. I'm just.
I'm not.
It's a little bit bigger.
I'm not sure it makes it deluxe. It just sounds nicer.
I just didn't know if there was something in there. I don't know. So.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I, I don't know what makes them deluxe. I, uh, you know. Uh, I just, I just feel. You know, listen, we. We made decisions, we received input, we were clear on, on the positives of that input and the negatives of that input. And, you know. We need to address the, the town hall. I think, um, uh, what I'm hearing from council is that we would much rather invest those funds into town hall. And have something for the long haul, um, and kind of, kind of suffer through this phase here. Um, we will be having some events, but you know, just like wine and dine, just like larger events, we have rented these. And, you know, renting them for the week, uh, is, is a lot less expensive than, uh, renting them for, uh, twelve month period. Um, councilperson David, I see your hand up.
Just one quick question. So for clarification, are we renting these only for events? Are we renting to have them sitting there? Till we build the bathrooms? Just, I just wanted to clarify.
Uh, that's a great, that's a great clarification. I think it was my intent, um, and what I was hearing from council is that we would have these. Um, available, uh, all the time. Um, until we finish the, the, uh, town hall facilities.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Maybe you could hide those by those bushes.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I would hate looking at that for a year. I'm just, but I, but yes, I understand what you're saying, but maybe hide them by some bushes or put up a vine.
Well, well, we'll see what we can do to screen them. But listen, I, I, I know they're not, they're not beautiful. Um, but again, I, I think someone who says like, hey, those are horrible looking. Why'd you do that? And you tell them, because they're ten thousand dollars versus a hundred thousand dollars that we could put into the. Town hall. I, I think they'll, they'll see the logic in the thinking pretty quickly. Council, is that, is that a consensus item?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I agree.
All right. Tommy, does that help you?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Correct. And yes, and we will, we will then make haste with, um. The permanent restroom improvements, uh, for town hall.
Very good. So that concludes, um, everything that staff wanted to present to the town council this evening. So if there's anything else, please let us know. Otherwise. It's up to you, Mayor, if you'd like to end this meeting.
I would, um, I want to make sure there's no input from the public still. Um, if there is none. And no additional items from staff or council, uh, we would be free to adjourn at six forty six PM. We will make it so. Thank you all for all that. And, uh, like I said, we'll, we'll work on the technology piece for next time, everyone. Um, I appreciate the great presentation on the, uh, on the fence and, uh, and, and the, you know, the collaborative. Uh, direction for staff. So we know exactly where we're going on both these items. Thanks all.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good evening.
Bye bye.